prevalent in different markets but are not within the parameters defined by A O P Sharia standard. So while we respect those scholars, those institutions, those regulators. And we respect their right of deciding according to their judgment what is correct. But as a matter of principles for A O P. A O P's accounting, governance, auditing and ethics standards are always to be read in conjunction with the A O P Sharia standards. Which are relevant to the subject, which means that that if we say that we are talking about Takaful Islamic insurance. That is primarily any model that is complying with the requirements. Of A O P's respective Sharia standard, anything that is not meeting your requirements of A O P Sharia standard. For our perspective, we don't cover it in our scope. We are not saying it's not Sharia compliant. We respect their views. We respect the views of the honorable scholars who have taken that view too. But as an institution, A O P's governance and auditing side, accounting, auditing and ethics, all these standards. Are always linked with only the A O P's standards, Sharia standards. Now, nutshell coming to back to the necessity part. The certain markets had this issue that initial years because of unavailability of Rita Kafal. Initial years, it was decided that reconventional reinsurance may be allowed. But now the Kafal sector is growing thirty to forty years old in different markets, at least twenty years in some other markets. So now probably the issue of necessity is like you know coming up again and again. How to determine necessity, just saying that necessity is the term. How to determine necessity is a, ah, we believe a go well governed and controlled process. Considering the technical aspects. After which you may conclude that there is a necessity in this matter and please keep in mind. That you know, for example, we say, okay, Tawarok can be used in case of necessity. Tawarok is a halal product. But it has its own negative aspects, it has its own nec- you know, uh, ch- challenges. That is the reason that it is not considered by A O P standards as a primary source of financing and investment. Rather, it is considered as a pro- uh, 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 a product that can be used in case of necessity. But fundamentally, we don't assume that Tawarok is haram. But when we can come to the conventional reinsurance, we need to keep in mind that it is fundamentally haram. The insurance itself and the conventional reinsurance are fundamentally haram. So that it, because you know, in lot of aspects, we talk about necessity, for example. A O P Sharia standard on Muradha says that agency should not be given to the same customer. Unless ness- it is necessary, unless there is a necessity. But again, that won't make it haram. That is fundamentally something permissible, but the necessity clause in that one or in the ka- in Tawaruk situation. They are, they are denoting that this is a less preferred form, but it is not haram. But here the necessity aspect goes one step beyond. Because here we are saying that because of necessity, you are resorting to something which is haram, which is not permissible. We need to understand that here accordingly, the connotation of necessity becomes more significant. And it may, it may need to be more strictly applied according to strict principles. Rather than using a vague wording that, okay, it is necessity, so we want to do it. So with that, now I will share the screen. And we'll take you through, I can see couple of comments coming in the, in the, in the, in the chat window. Brother Abdul Salam Aswath mentioned, indeed his voice is not clear, that is correct. Brother Shakib Mahmud, unfortunately, your voice was having an echo internally. I hope my voice is not having a problem right now. Because it's in couple of earlier webinars, people complained, so I tried, I'm trying to use a different microphone right now. Sister Ali and others, if you can just try to confirm that my, uh, my voice is clear.
Yes, it's clear.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we have comment from brother Shafi'i Ahmed, Assalamualaikum and thank you A O P for this valuable session, important topic. I'm Shafi'i Ahmed from Arabian Shield Insurance Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. My question is, under paragraph eight, the Kafal operator must obtain S S P approval on specific time bound and case to case basis. Uh, brother Shafiq, thank you very much for being with us. If you just allow me, because I just completed the initial introduction part, now I'm sharing the screen. It will be more appropriate for the benefit of other participants. That I address your question when we reach paragraph number eight. So I'll just take your permission to wait a little bit. Okay, I think, I'm not sure about whether the screen is being shared, so I think there is an issue here about sharing of the screen. Uh, let me just try to share the screen, uh, in another way. Because just I think I need one minute to resolve this issue. I'm sorry, uh, because I'm using the other microphone, so it will take, uh, it will not let me share it properly. So I just need one minute to create a different file. Just to confirm that you can see my screen now, please.
Yes, brother, we can see it.
And secondly, is it moving? It's moving?
It's, it's moving, yes.
Okay, sister Alia in future, just a request, always give me a PDF file of the presentation as well, just to save time. Because my apologies for to all the participants here to take their time, but at times. It becomes like you know, difficult to share the PowerPoint, uh, it creates some problem. Okay, so I have given the initial, uh, initial background, so I'll not be going through the, going through the. Fresh nail and the introduction part, I'll start directly with the objective. Uh, and obviously, as is novel, our normal practice, I'll read important sections. And I will brief about the other, other sections and will be requesting everybody to provide their comments. Uh, to you, as, as always, you can provide your comments right now or you can send your comments to governance@aofe.com at a. Uh, at the latest stage through right, in writing. Okay, the objective of this standard is to provide core principles under which at the Kafal institution may avail conventional insurance in the event of necessity. This standard shall be applicable to all Takaful institutions, including window Takaful institutions needing to avail conventional reinsurance in the event of necessity. The standard shall also apply to Rita Kafal institutions and co-Takaful institutions which further to, which further reduce the risk by opting for retrocession. Conventionally, subject to the extent suitable to their business model and approval and exemption granted by their respective Sharia supervisory boards. For avoidance of doubt, it is clarified that the scope of this standard and the term conventional insurance does not apply to Rita Kafal Islamic insurance. Islamic cooperative insurance coverage obtained from an institution. That follows a Takaful Islamic cooperative insur- insurance model. Approved by its respective S S B or other Sharia authority but may not fulfill certain requirements of A O P Sharia standards. So just to clarify. The standard applies primarily on Takaful which follows A O P. However, that is A O P Sharia standard, which is Vakalla model and. Vakalla Vah model, it falls within that, we, we, we are clear on that part. So, uh, but with regard to cooperative insurance model like Saudi cooperative insurance. Uh, Mudarba based model like particularly the older model more prevalent in Malaysia and some of parts of the world. They be, they, they may be considered Sharia compliant according to their own Sharia authority and Sharia boards. May not comply with the requirement of A O P Sharia po- Sharia standard. But for the purpose of this one, they are not considered conventional. Which means that if you for, for example, there is a reinsurance company, Rita Kafal company, let's take an example. Rita Kafal company which follow the Mudarba model. So while that model may not be strictly in compliance with A O P Sharia standard. But it will not be considered a conventional insurance for the purpose of this standard. So you can still resort to them without applying the comparatively strict conditions followed in this standard. Availing such coverage shall be subject to a specific approval by the S S B of the Takaful institution and a general approval of the Central Sharia Board of the respective jurisdiction if any. This standard should be read with S S forty one and S S twenty six. And it shall be read in conjunction and interpreted applied only in the light of requirements of these two standards. Definitions, necessity. Uh, brother, uh, brother Shafiq, your question is partially addressed here in case, in by definition also, but I'll come to that one later when we come there. Necessity in the specific context of this standard refers to the temporary time bound necessity to obtain coverage or an extent of coverage from conventional reinsurance. By the Kafal institution in order to manage the liabilities of the participants, the Kafal fund. To safeguard the greater interest of the participant at large and just note it down. Greater interest of the participants, not the greatest interest of the shareholders. Provided that, one, it is not solely or primarily representing the commercial considerations of the institution such as to increase market share. Or the profit of the institution and. It applies when and only when the Takaful institution has exerted all reasonable efforts to avail Rita Kafal coverage under Sharia compliant modes. These are the two main conditions. So but the third condition is already written in the definition, that is time bound, time bound and temporary. So it has to be time bound and temporary and it has to be not primarily for commercial consideration but to safeguard. So effectively, if you see, first condition is time bound, temporary. It cannot be that, okay, we got approval in nineteen eighty five, so now in twenty twenty five, we are still using that permission. Second. It may be even to the extent of coverage, not full coverage, but even to the extent of coverage. Then, second condition, safeguard the greater interest of the participants at large, which means not the interest of the shareholders primarily. Third condition, which is appearing here as a condition, proviso. Solely or not solely or primarily representing the commercial consideration like increasing the market share or the profit. Next condition, only when all the Sharia compliant effort, like modes, like you know, are. Uh, like you know, not possible and you have applied or exerted all reasonable efforts. Participant Takaful Fund is the common definition, so I'll not repeat, it is coming from our FAS forty three and forty two actually. Reasonable effort, this is an important term, this is again coming from the accounting paradigm. Normally in accounting, what is considered as reasonable effort, we have used primarily that as the definition here. In the specific context of this standard, refer to all possible efforts in the normal course of business without incurring significantly higher cost. While not ignoring any possible opportunities in line with the requirements of the standard. The terms significantly higher refers to a percentage of thirty three percent or higher. Now, this is something that, that we have tried to put that when we say significantly higher. Uh, if you say it is five percent higher. You, you are saying that, okay, Islamic insurance, reinsurance is available at five percent or ten percent higher rate. Then is it, is it the situation where you have exerted all reasonable efforts? That is the question. So we considered, we considered different ratios for this one, but then we applied thirty three based on that common, uh, common. You know, principle which is applied in multiple A O P Sharia standards and other fatawa that are available in different markets. Where, which is based on the Hadith Asulu Khati' that if you have thirty three percent plus effect. We consider that it's a significantly higher rate. So in that situation, uh, we, we, we feel that reasonable effort is exerted. Do we have any questions? Uh, there are some of the things coming in the chat window. Okay. Okay, so we, there are a couple of question, comments in the chat window, but. Uh, I'll be more appreciating, okay, in the Q and A tab, we have another question coming up. Okay, there is a comment in French, need translation, somebody to help on translation part. There is a comment from, uh, from Kirtina Mohammed Darafin, paragraph sixty. Okay, so let me come to sixty. Reinsurance is the standard definition coming from the accounting side, so we do not want to as, as, as much as. We can align between other A O P standards, we try to keep it aligned, so that's why we did not reinvent the definition again. Rita Kafal, now this, let me, let me read it out and then we will take the comment from sister, sister Kirtina. Uh, read, sorry, Ta- uh, my apologies, it is going jump, it is jumping. Yeah, Rita Kafal, Rita Kafal is the arrangement. Is the arrangement among Takaful institutions on behalf of their respective P T F under management to devise a mechanism for the avoidance of part of risk which the P T F may encounter. On the basis of such arrangement, a Rita Kafal P T F. Which has a distinct realistic personality and independent financial liabilities formed through making contributions out of the P T F. As part of the contribution paid to its participants on the basis of Tawarok. The Rita Kafal P T F thus formed assumed the task of covering part of the risk encountered by the P T F. Explanation, Rita Kafal is the Sharia compliant alternative to the conventional reinsurance having the distinctive characteristics. Characteristics of being based on the same principles of Takaful and mutuality as indicated in S S twenty six. Islamic insurance and S S forty one Islamic reinsurance. Instead of exchange of reinsurance premium, premiums. The need for Rita Kafal may arise in respect of Takaful institute, a Takaful institution due to the lack of sufficient capacity to take risk. Or because of regulatory requirements of risk sharing with regard to the magnitude of the risk in question. Now, let me take the question, uh, so the comment is about six E. To devise a mechanism for the avoidance of part of risk, what does the document use the avoidance? Should it be management instead, is if the Takaful institution were to avoid the risk, what would have been avoided? Thank you very much, I think it's a very good comment, thank you, highly appreciated. Personally, I would agree that it should be management, not avoidance. I think the original was coming from the Sharia side, so we need to still see if it is a translation issue and if we can still make a change. But I highly appreciate that your comment, uh, your comment. Uh, sister Alia, please make a note of it because. On one side, we don't want to make changes to the definitions which are already adopted in other sets of standard. But on the other side, this comment has a merit. So we, we can see that, uh, like you know, what can be done, at least if we can add something in. Uh, add something in brackets or like you know in footnote, at least if we don't want to change the, amend the definition. And if we amend the definition, that is also okay and we can make a note of it for future changes on the accounting side as well. Personally, I agree more, but if I remember correctly, the original definition was coming from the. Sharia side, which was very slightly amended on accounting to accept, uh, to address the accounting part. And then we, like you know, we have just taken it here as it is. But this is an important point, we take a note of it, thank you very much for this good point. Uh, sister Alia, there was a comment on the, in French, and just make a, yeah, make a translation of that one.
Yes, the question is. Uh, the question is, what are the provisions and rules to ensure that conflict of interest have no impact on the governors of the Kafal institutions? Throughout the implementation cycle.
Uh, thank you very much, I think that is a very important point, so the point is primarily covered in our Sharia governance standard. Uh, which applies to Takaful and all others. Uh, not only this, the, the, the necessity element has a conflict of interest element, so for example. And as, as I talked about the definition of, of, of necessity. That we said that we are considering the aspect of benefit to the stakeholders, that is participants, not the shareholders only. So these sort of as- aspects, we always cover in different standards. The primary considerations are covered in the Sharia governance standard, but these are also covered in multiple A O P standards. Which are applicable to Takaful like all other financial institutions, thank you very much, brother Bubakreen. It's a great pleasure to have you here and our apologies that we have this communication issue, so if the my answer. Uh, is, is not clear, then my apologies on that part. Okay, so let's move ahead, uh, Takaful, we have the standard definition again coming from forty, standard forty three. Takaful institution also coming from standard forty three. The Kafal operator also coming from standard forty three, sisters, uh, sister, uh, if you just make a note of it. I think for standard forty two was issued earlier and forty three was issued later. I think we need to recheck the references of those definitions which were covered in FAS forty two. We need to take them from FAS forty two, not from FAS forty three, this is for internal improvement towards the end of the project, okay?
Yes, inshallah.
Because forty three has also taken it from forty two, okay?
Yes, inshallah.
Okay, now coming to the core principle, so let's first write the fundamental and then we'll come to question by brother Shafiq as well. Obtaining conventional reinsurance is impermissible for Takaful institution, that is the fundamental, it is considered haram. So if you see paragraph thirty one, three one, three two and, and six one of paragraph forty, forty one. S forty one requires that it is permissible to insure with Islamic reinsurance while generally it is impermissible for Takaful institutions to insure with conventional insurer. Except in the case of necessity, so fundamental rule is. Conventional insurance, conventional insurance are haram, they are impermissible. If it further requires, uh, that Takaful institution should insure to the greater, at the largest possible extent, extent with Islamic reinsurance. So now the core principle says accordingly, Takaful institution shall procure Rita Kafal coverage only under Sharia compliant arrangement. This is the fundamental approach, this is the fundamental approach. Now going to the next page. Notwithstanding the generality of paragraph seven, again, paragraph seven is the fundamental, but still there are issues. Obtaining conventional insurance may and shall only be allowable in case of a temporary time bound necessity as determined in line with Sharia principles and rules. And the requirements of the standard, such approvals shall be granted by the S S B of the Takaful institution. On a specific time bound case to case basis in line with the requirements of respective A O P Sharia standards and the principles contained in this standard. Now let's go back to the question by brother Shafiq. His point is that, uh, that the, the, under paragraph eight, Takaful operator must obtain S S P approval on a specific time bound and case to case basis. I think an approval prior to placement may expose the company as the risk usually attached on renewal or on inception and firm orders are released last minute by the policy orders. To avoid the Kafal operator exposure, a provision to obtain approval within a specific time from the placement completion. Would be helpful at least for the risk attaching immediately and time constraints in obtaining prior approval. Brother Shafiq, I think your point has a merit on the functionality side. I think, yeah, I think, uh, but it has a negative as well, risk as well. The risk is brother Shafiq, that if you, if you do it. And then you go back to Sharia board, in one way you are pressurizing them, that now it is done. You cannot say it is not approved. So you are taking it for granted that approval will be there. So now there are two different issues, number one is about case to case basis, so we are not saying that you need to take, we need to clarify what do we mean case to case basis. We haven't set policy to policy basis, so we are not saying that you need to go it on for each policy. What we are saying here is different, different situations of reinsurance coverage need to be covered. So it's less, uh, so, so I think we need to clarify two parts, one part fully agreed with you. That is here, if we have a confusion with regard to that case to case means. That you need to take approval for each policy, I think that is not the original requirement here. So we need to clarify and we need to avoid confusion because this point that you raised is very important. So. I think what we wanted to say here for case to case was not about placing the risk. It was about obtaining the Rita Kafal, uh, reinsurance coverage as a whole. So for example, today we stand at a position where we have. A Rita Kafal, uh, reinsurance, conventional insurance coverage approval available which was available to us. Within that limit, for which we already has taken prior approval of the Sharia board. And have gone through the whole governance process required by the standard. Now, within that limit. Subject to the parameters defined by the, during the governance process and the controls defined. If you have a new policy and based on the new policy. You make the necessary changes and take coverage from a Takaful insurance operator. Which is already taken, like for which prior approval of the limit, prior approval of the agreement, prior approval of the. Uh, reinsurance policy and all that has already been obtained, then you don't need to go for taking approval for this one. This is one situation. But the other situation is that you have a new policy. And for that new policy, your current reinsurance coverage is not enough. Or your Rita Kafal coverage is not enough and that's why you want to go for reinsurance coverage. And you are saying that, okay, because it's urgent, we need to take this approval or dividend to take this, uh, place this risk and then we'll go to Sharia board. I think this should not be acceptable, again, what I'm submitting here, as I always say. We are doing as secretariat, uh, like you know, for functioning as a link between you and the working, the committee and the board. So when I am clarifying, I'm trying to clarify based on what we understand, based on the discussions of the board and the committee. So I think we, at least I am clear based on the word discussions in the committee that we are not talking about taking. Every policy's approval, so the case to case basis need to be clarified here, that is part one. Part two, your, if we take your suggestion other way around and say that, no. You need a post approval, not pre approval, I think that is not acceptable. Based on, again, maybe it's my personal view, but I'm not talking primarily based on my view, I'm talking primarily based on the view of the, uh, of the committee. So sister, I think, uh, brother Shafiq, if the point is clear to you, I will, I'll appreciate if you can just provide further comment and clarify, if, if confirmation, if you agree. With the clarification provided, so based on your comment, what we will do. Is that we will define that here we are talking about case to case as a policy, as a overall coverage approval. Not for each policy. Means that overall approval with regard to each of the reinsurance coverage and case to case may include, you know, the business segments. So for example, you may have a coverage for fire, you may have a coverage for inj- uh, injury or marine. But you may not be having allowed a coverage for maybe auto, I'm just giving you example. Because the board will see necessity in respect of each of the aspects. We have issue of risk retention as well going forward, so highly appreciate your comment, brother. And, uh, like, uh, generally, for every policy, we need to clarify in the standard very clearly, again, after discussion with the committee and the board. That part is well taken. The other part about a new reinsurance policy being taken. Without prior approval, I think it will defeat the purpose of the whole standard, but again, your comment is well taken. Thank you very much, brother. We have our brother Sayyid Imtiaz Abbas Hussein, Takaful should not allow to use reinsurance facilities of convention due to following reasons. Takaful is almost a decade old now, so Takaful may use brother Abbas Imtiaz just to confirm. Because in your, if you're talking about Pakistan, it's two decades old now, nineteen years. And if you talk about other markets, it's up to forty years old in some of the markets. So Takaful may use other medium sized Takaful or other countries instead of large conventional insurance to mitigate big risk. Using conventional insurance by Takaful will be like drinking hot milk of glass after putting a few bits of go. After putting a few bits of gold. Quran clearly mentions after a list of haram items that these may be used in extreme necessity and use of, of reinsurance facility for conventional insurance by a Takaful. Quran clearly mentions after a list of haram items that these may be used in extreme necessity and use of reinsurance facility for conventional insurance by a Takaful is not that much extreme necessity. Now, brother Imtiaz, while I highly appreciate your, your comments and your wisdom, but at the same time, when the Sharia standard has said necessity, here we are not talking about the Sharia standard, here we are talking about the governance standard. Governance standard cannot go and challenge the term necessity. Your comment in due course, we can pass on to the Sharia board when they consider revision of the standard. But I can tell you that when we try to develop our Sharia standards, they are there to provide working models. And in order to provide working model, at least you, at times you need to have kickstart. If you don't, if, if our respectable scholars did not allow conventional reinsurance in the initial days of Takaful, there was no kickstart. But we know that some of our senior scholars like Sheikh Taqiyul Usmani, as we know, he initially allowed conventional reinsurance because of the regulatory restrictions, because of the initial challenges. But now his view is that now Takaful is quite, quite stable and they should stop using conventional reinsurance, that is his view. Personal view that I am aware of. But that is one thing that we should consider that, that there is a significance of time and scenarios. So while it may be getting twenty years old in Pakistan, thirty to forty years old in some of the Middle Eastern markets, but it may still be new in some other markets. Even if it is not like you know, new, in some of the markets, its proportion is not enough. Like for example, if you are talking about, like some of the markets where we are aware, even if banking is reaching twenty five to thirty percent, Islamic insurance or Takaful has reached only ten to twelve percent. Maybe in the new business, they might be getting twenty percent, twenty five percent, but considering the whole business as a whole, they might be still around ten percent or even less than ten percent. Now that means that, and that is about in Takaful. Now for having a re-Takaful, you need to have much bigger muscles, you need to have much bigger capital, you need to have much bigger ability and you know the, even in case of large re-Takaful entities etcetera, there are exchange risks and other issues as well. So these are the challenges for which I may not have a solution today. And if I say that you stop it altogether, it means that the kickstart that was needed, the initial ignition that was needed for Takaful, including different factors, particularly including the regulatory requirements, the rating related issues, these were not going to let it, let it continue and still it's a weak sector. Purpose of this standard is not to make the weakest and weak sector further weaker. The purpose is to have a robust and resilient system of governance in line with Sharia principles and rules. So from that perspective, I would personally, again, my position as O P, I would say O P Sharia board has mentioned about necessity, governance board clearly cannot challenge the necessity, it can only define the governance and controls around the process of determining that necessity and that is the objective of this standard. But other than that, I don't think that we should be challenging the necessity requirement today. But yes, the respective Sharia, central Sharia boards of different countries can take this decision and they can try to address this issue at their level. Brother Imtiaz, thank you very much. Your comments are always very, very useful. I hope that I have tried to like, you know, at least summarize this one in a, like, you know, in a, in a, in a way that you can agree kindly. Brother Umar Hafez, Assalamualaikum, very much sir, thank you very much for joining us. It's always a pleasure and you know, encouragement for us that senior people like you join in. Thanks so much for discussing and issuing a standard for the very critical issue in Takaful. I have some doubts about the, the possibility of applying these terms and reference mentioned. I suggest a manual to be produced by O P or other professional entities and to then use by insurance department in Takaful to guide them and Sharia, the auditors. I hope this is possible to do. Thank you very much, Dr. Umar. It's a good idea, great idea. So maybe at the next stage, we need to come up with additional guidance on that part. We'll take this suggestion to the Takaful governance committee and obviously one thing to mention, as I mentioned, we are already working on the capacity building side on development of the training program. So sister Alia, if you can pass on this message that even a training program on this area to develop, to guide the reinsurance departments within Takaful etcetera should to be on this upcoming standard, Insha Allah. I think it is very important to comment for providing guidelines or manual and also maybe I'm just taking clue from that for having specific workshops on that subject. Thank you very much again. We know sir that there might be some like issues of practicality and that's why we have kept lot of things in the hand of the Sharia supervisory board and the central Sharia board of the respective country. We have comment from my dear brother Talal Usmani, case to case basis would generally be applicable in case of facultative reinsurance. For treaty insurance, it's an year long contract where approval on case to case basis would not be practical. How such instances be catered for? Thank you very much, brother Talal. I think your comment is absolutely valid. I think it is in line with what actually I said as explanation as well. I don't think that we are on different ground. I think more or less we are on the same ground, so yes, agreed. Uh, one thing is clear, even for, even for facultative, even for facultative, the criteria and parameters may be defined, the reinsurance party may be approved. The criteria, retention, whatever we have defined in the standard, all these things can be predefined. So once these things are predefined and the management acts within those predefined criteria, I think it will be considered a pre-approval and then a post facto approval can be obtained to just reaffirm the application of the criteria. Uh, so I think we can add this point, like you know, for slightly explaining this matter either within the standard or maybe in the base of conclusion etcetera. Dr. Umar Hafez has another comment, all authorities of supervision of Takaful and conventional insurance decide what is the minimum ratio of reinsurance or re-Takaful are allowed locally and transically. This issue has a lot of complications and rely on how advanced is the local market. Thus a manual is very important taking into account all possible practical cases. Thank you very much, Dr. Umar. Your point is well taken and we'll take all these further details in consideration for the manual or guidelines as well as for the workshop, Insha Allah. Thank you very much again, sir. We have comment from brother Mohammed Tazim Mahmood, how will O P ensure consistency in the application of the standard across different jurisdictions where particularly where the interpretation of necessity may vary. Uh, on a lighter note, brother, we are, you know, uh, we are at, we are at ease because we just issue the standard and when, then we are least concerned about it. And it's not that least concern, we are going to work on impact studies etcetera as well, we are starting that part. But you know, we are the standard setting body, which means that we have no power in any jurisdiction to ensure compliance with our standard. So there are different level of compliance, the most important level is insured by the regulatory and supervisory authorities, that is R S As. The countries where our standards are officially adopted, the respective regulatory and supervisory authorities establish that. In addition to that, it is established through the different organs of governance. So the respective Sharia boards ensure it, the Sharia audit function will ensure it, internal versus as well as external. The central banks and the, and the regulators in this case, like in case of insurance commission or securities commission, whoever is the regulator, their inspection teams will ensure it. So this is like, you know, established through governance and control mechanism rather than A O P having any power or any authority on that part. So this is, this makes our function comparatively easier that we just issue the standard and then leave it to others. But again, for now, we have started working on impact studies as well, so Insha Allah will be working on that part. Uh, Muhavi Isma has a comment, first I would like to thank you very much for inviting us to attend this very important topic. You are most welcome and it actually, it's always our pleasure to have you on board. Second, as you know, there were so many resolutions and fatwa and researches from the Islamic institutions scholars in nineteen eighty five encouraging establishing Takaful insurance companies and re-Takaful insurance companies through inviting the Islamic countries and concerned organization. So now it is highly important that O P and the Islamic and financial Islamic institutions go ahead as quickly as possible to encourage establishing re-Takaful reinsurance companies, Insha Allah. Thank you very much, no difference opinion. Actually, we have talked, it is not our mandate, but we have talked to some important countries and their respective authorities that they may consider doing it, some of the larger countries may have the muscle to do it and like they are establishing finance centers or Islamic finance centers across the globe. So that is our request to them that they can try to incorporate that. Thank you very much. We have comment from Badri Jaffer, what is the O P's definition of necessity for insurance? That is conventional insurance and of consideration for, condition for taking insurance. I think you are raising a very good point. Actually, actually, this issue had been discussed in earlier O P standards and the fatawa of different scholars. At this point of time, we have not put into subject, into this requirement, regulate, the requirement remains the same. If there is no, no Takaful available in a country and there is necessity and necessity is to be determined according to the Sharia board of the, of the institution etcetera. And then this is the situation. But yes, we at the governance side in particular and even in accounting side, we haven't, oh, sorry Sharia side, we haven't gone for any details on that part. Your point is well taken. Uh, sister Alia, if we can take a note for, because if this one applies on general Takaf, on, on general governance standards, it does not apply on, on the, on this standard. Because this standard applies on Takaful institution only. But what about if a bank is having Ijarah assets and it takes conventional insurance on those Ijarah assets? What happens in that situation? Sharia standards, particularly the initial Sharia standards touch upon this subject without going into detail. So I think it's a good point for us to take a note of it and consider it as a possible project for either the Sharia board or the governance board according to, according to, like you know, the mandate of the respective boards. Thank you very much, it was a very good point. Now let's move to quickly to the standard and I will, let me provide the summary of the requirements of the standard and then we'll go. So first part is that you need to exhaust all possible Sharia compliance options. That is the first, you need to exhaust it. And we talked about significant, significant part, that thirty three percent. Again, we would love to have some comments on that one. I remember somebody said that it should be only ten percent, that if Islamic finance is ten percent expensive, then you can go to conventional. But on the other hand, somebody said if it is double only, then it should apply. We cap thirty three percent on the analogy that Absuluf Kasee. Thirty three percent or one third is significant. That is what we believe has been used as a principle in lot of O P's standards and lot of padawa across the board. So that is one part. Uh, the assessment of necessity should be performed carefully on a prudent basis and conventional insurance may be resorted after reassuring all possible have been exhausted. Now difference of rate and other commercial considerations. So we said in the definition that commercial consideration should not be the primary. In no case shall the difference of rate or other similar commercial considerations be the sole authority, sole or primary justification for availing conventional insurance by a Takaful institution. Then effect of rating on the decision. So one is rate, we have re-Takaful available but the rate is high. We said that you need to resort to first thing, so it is thirty three percent fast. At least thirty three percent, but again there are other considerations, but we talked about thirty three percent thing. Then we are talking about rating. So where we, because at times you need rating, now rating can be a requirement of your customer. Rating can be a requirement of the regulator and rating can be requirement of market at large. So where the ratings of such re-Takaful institutions are not within acceptable limits as per regulatory requirement and if exemption from such regulatory requirement is not possible, conventional insurance may be obtained strictly on the basis of necessity. And where the rating of such re-Takaful institution are less than desired rating but within acceptable limits as per regulatory requirement. Also you want high rating, but high rating is not available. But that rating that is available is still acceptable as per regulatory requirements or exemption as per regulatory requirements is possible because if you write to the regulator that we are Takaful and we need exemption from this one because re-Takaful is available only on this one, is this basis, this is the, this is, there is a possibility that you get exemption. In that situation, conventional insurance should not be obtained. Now, this is a request to the management of the Takaful companies who are attending here today. Please, at times we become used to something. We know that we are used to obtaining conventional insurance. But please keep in mind that every time we take a conventional insurance, it means that we are doing a impermissible thing on the ground of necessity and we need to ask our conscience whether the real necessity is there, number one. Number two, we need to see if we have actually exhausted all possible efforts. So for example, if I ask you, you go to a non-Muslim country and you have a, like you know, two shops and there is a shop which is selling haram burgers made of haram meat and those are available at a cheaper rate. And then you have a shop adjacent to that, that is selling on a higher rate but it is halal burger. Some people say it is cost of being Muslim, you know, C O B M, cost of being Muslim. But yes, there is a cost of being Muslim. There is no harm in having a cost of being Muslim. Again, it's not good to exploit others based on cost of being Muslim, but there always is the cost of being Muslim. So the question is that in a nutshell, every time we do it, we need to ask these questions. The standard is putting the questions for you, you need to ask these questions to yourselves. Let me try to complete this section and then we'll see if we have comments on this section. So let's, now effect of the rating, in the, even the D C N has been made to take conventional insurance instead of re-Takaful in line with provision of paragraph this in the best interest of the participants. It's preferable that the conventional insurance company has a reasonably better rating, reasonably better rating. So you say, oh, because re-Takaful has one notch below the conventional, so we go to conventional. I'm sorry, it might not be a justification for necessity. And necessity, again, I told you one thing, that there is one type of necessity which is fundamentally not impermissible. Tawarok, it may have lot of dislikings, lot of Sharia issues, but it is fundamentally not haram. Giving agency to the same customer in Murabha is principally not good, but it may not be principally haram equivalent to reba. But going to conventional reinsurance is principally, principally haram. And that is why the application of criteria of necessity here is very important. Obtaining re-Takaful coverage shall be preferred even if the re-Takaful institution has a lower rating compared to the available conventional insurance options provided that rating of such re-Takaful option is within the risk appetite of the Takaful institution in the absence of any regulatory requirement. Sister Alia, I think we, we earlier noted in the public hearing also that this is a comma and I should be small, there is a typo error here that we need to correct before we finalize the standard, okay? And there was one, there is a point that we noted in last public hearing, I believe, that is that paragraph thirteen and paragraph eleven seem to have little bit of overlapping that need to be avoided, okay?
Yes.
Now, one of the most fundamental issues is retention of risk. In a nutshell, if I don't retain the risk and I pass on all the risk to conventional insurance, I mean, it means that fundamentally I am working as a front agent of the reinsurance company. You may not like my comment, but the reality is that, that instead of, you, you become more like an insurance broker than as, than an insurer yourself. And also particularly if I just, okay, my capital is small, I just take more and more Takaful business and I just pass it on completely or significantly to conventional reinsurance. It fundamentally means that I am just working as a conduit for conventional insurance or conventional insurance. And this is what we have said as a principle, a Takaful institution in no case shall work just as a conduit for conventional insurance or reinsurance and a Takaful institution shall ensure a minimum extent of reinsurance with conventional insurance companies. The minimum extent shall be commensurate with the regulatory requirement for minimum reinsurance coverage for the specific insurance business where applicable. And Takaful institutions is strategic considering the regulatory requirements related to solvency and capital maintenance. Accordingly, a Takaful institution shall retain a reasonable percentage of underlying risk, particularly in case of treaty reinsurance. Such retention of risk shall be in the following ranges. In the normal cases, preferably not less than fifty percent, but fifty one percent, but in no case less than thirty three percent exclude. Less than thirty-three percent excluding excess of loss policies. So we are saying that excess of loss policies because we can understand that it is the capacity issue. That is the reason that excess of loss policies are excluded. But in normal, uh in normal treaty, normal situation, you should try to maintain fifty-one percent retention. But in no case less than thirty-three percent retention. Again, the arguments are fifty-one percent means that majority, it means that majority part is still remain, remains Halal. In no case less than thirty-three percent means that at least you have what we call Absuluf Kasir. So at least you have a significant aspect of retention. However, there are exemptions in B. In newly launched Takaful institutions and business lines for the first three years of operation and the business lines not covered by the Takaful. Rita Kafal institution not less than fifteen percent excluding excess of loss policies. So the new lines. And new, new lines and new line, lines not covered by Rita Kafal, at least fifteen percent you need to keep. In all cases, net reinsurance premium, net of any discount shall not be higher than the amount of net Takaful contribution. Less applicable Wakala fee. This is a condition counter check that you should not be functioning primarily as their conduit. What will happen eventually? That you just pass on, you take Wakala fee out, effectively you make. Parts, you, you know, you make it like that effectively you have passed on the whole risk of participants to the conventional insurance company. And you have taken out your Wakala fee as your income. Sorry, some people may not be happy with some of my comments. But please try to understand, this is not a issue of less preferred and preferred. Like in case of certain other areas, it is the issue of Halal and Haram. It is not justifiable that you go, like, like, okay, we have this issue in banking as well. You take deposit from people saying, oh, we are Sharia compliant institution. Then through Tawarok, you pass it on to the conventional banks. Or you create Sharia wrappers and invest in the next, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the central bank, you know, the, the central bank T bills or the government bonds. This, this is not only issue of Sharia non-compliance, but it is also the issue of breach of trust. And issue of the reputation of Islamic finance industry. So sure, my apologies if anybody feel my comments are a bit harsh. But I can tell you that thought process of the committee and the thought process of the board was that. Takaful needs to be established as a business, not only as a conduit for conventional reinsurance. And the same practices as I mentioned, like in case of bank, that if you go to the market and you say, oh, we are Sharia compliant. But then you pass on all the business to conventional insurance and effectively you, you pass on whole risk to them. It means that you are just showing a front end of Sharia compliance, but effectively you are not doing it. So if we are going actually for the cases of necessity. Then a retention of appropriate level is must. Then we say that use of Kotakaful should be ensured before going to reinsurance. Okay, we know a lot of people don't like Kotakaful because the problem is Kotakaful means that you are having business shared with your competitor. Okay, but it is Halal. You need to support the acts of, acts of, uh, you know, acts which are acceptable by Sharia and you need to. Not to promote anything which is sinful. So the point is, if I go for Takaf, Rita, Kotakaful. Because, okay, I don't have Rita Kafal coverage available, but a counterpart, a competitor or another Takaful company in the market may have. You know, co-insurance is very common. We can use Kotakaful as a reasonable basis to avoid conventional reinsurance. But for that, we need to consider that Halal and Haram comes before. My personal profit. Now, problem is, at time I would prefer to go to conventional insurance rather than going for Kotakaful. Because I believe that my market share will reduce or my profitability will reduce or my competitor will grow. But please try to understand, this is the issue of Halal and Haram and we need to understand. So you cannot say that, okay, I prefer conventional insurance because if I go for Kotakaful. I will lose my market share, I will reduce my, it will reduce my profitability. I can tell you if you do it, I'm not a Mufti, but you can ask a Mufti, what you do is not correct. Uh there is a point about party to the contract should be the P T F and then, uh then we have the period of coverage about issue that all cases that should not exceed the actual need. So we, as we talked about time bound, so this has to be, the coverage has to be time bound. It cannot be, you cannot go for long-term contracts without actually. Ensuring that it is a necessity and continuity should be considered according to a transition plan. That is a very important point. That we have talked about a transition plan that, okay, nineteen eighty-five, we started taking conventional insurance and till today, we don't have a solution. We need to find solutions. We need to find solutions together. Takaful companies may need to join hands together to create Rita Kafal funds by themselves. There are a lot of other solutions and again, they can, they can argue with the, they can approach the respective governments and the respective reinsurance companies in their countries and the global country, reinsurance companies. To create Rita Kafal funds. If you just go and say, okay, we are not allowed by our Sharia board. For doing this, I can assure you that most of the reinsurance companies will not prefer to lose your business and they will create Rita Kafal funds. And windows by themselves. And it has, we have seen this in the market. Only thing is that it is not growing because we are getting lot of. Approvals based on necessity without going through all, all of these processes. There are additional consideration in case of window Takaful because there is a conflict of interest rate that window Takaful and the conventional parent part of Takaful may negotiate with one. Conventional reinsurance provider and try to negotiate a better rate based on the combined business. Or get some other benefit out of that. That is the reason that we are saying that instead of taking. A, a single policy or like, you know, negotiating it simply, window Takaful should be doing it separately without having the conflict of interest with the conventional parent. So then can treatment of transactions and balances with conventional insurance that interest-bearing element and others need to be eliminated and kept to a limited extent. So we have covered some sections here. Uh and then we are coming to the governance and control requirements that respective authorities. Like those charged with governance that is board and, and, and board and the Sharia board, they have their own requirements. Most important of this is. We need to have a time, a strategy and time-bound transition plan. That is a fundamental that is required. And those charged with governance and the management have to play their role in that part. I can see several comments are there, but since we have a limited time. I think Sister, Sister Alia, although we kept it for one and a half hour, but the issues may need more time. Uh so it's okay, we can just try to wrap it up quickly. So I'm not going to read the remaining sections. In the remaining sections, we are actually clarifying. What the management, management's role is, what is the Sharia board's role is. Uh particularly for Sharia board, we have put some of the factors to be questioned. That if before they make a decision, before they approve it, they need to ask some question. Are there any regulatory requirements in this respect? And what is the effect of same while considering necessity? How many rejections? By Rita Kafal of institutions can be evidenced? How much Rita Kafal coverage is rejected by Takaful institution due to rate difference or unsatisfactory rating? What data and analysis are available with regard to the market factors? Have all possible avenues been evaluated, including an assessment of the peers' approach? What is the process of assessment of necessity? Uh what is the process of necessity, assessment of necessity at the industry level? What efforts are not exerted or revenues not evaluated considering the cost or other commercial consideration? How it can be evidenced that the retention of risk beyond those proposed by the management is not practical or feasible? And to what extent is the transition plan being adhered to? These are. Some of the fundamental questions that Sharia supervisory board should ask and evaluate before just giving a necessity-based approval based on one single request by the management. Uh periodic reviews and renewal. So any policy that has been taken based on approval should be subject to periodic reviews. As we said that it is a time-bound approval. So at least on an annual basis, it should be considered. Then there are transparency and disclosure requirements. Uh and it should be clear that to what extent, to what extent, uh to, to what extent conventional insurance is being used. Because it is the right of your stakeholders to know whether you are actually placing their funds and placing their risk with a great Takaful or with reinsurance. It will serve as a, you know, peer pressure factor or market, market discipline factor. That can, that can improve the overall practices. So then I will not be going in further detail here. The effective date is planned to be one January twenty twenty-seven. We intend to finalize this standard within this year, Insha Allah. It was issued last year and this year we want to close it. Now I will stop sharing my presentation and will take the questions that have been raised till now. Uh there is a long list of questions, so let me try to be a bit, uh, quick in addressing most of them. Uh so let's go, uh, one by one. So the question number one is, uh, Makthud Sabirov. In case of an insured event where transferring risk to traditional Takaful insurance, the operator should not receive reinsurance compensation but should receive Kadhasan to cover losses. What is your attitude to this approach? When we say that in case of necessity it is allowed, then the answer is that yes, uh, I, I, this is a Sharia issue primarily and if Sharia allowed necessity. The necessity-based coverage, then it means that necessity-based compensation is also allowed to be taken. So Brother Makthud, I think you have a good point. Uh from an ideal perspective, it might be good. But this will, this particularly in case of large claims, like for example, if I cover a dam. We know that mo- most of the Takaful companies may not be able to cover mid-size to large size dams. Now, if you cover a dam and you don't cover it particularly in a large catastrophic event or other, those situations. Uh you may never be able to address that even if you take, consider it as loan. So technically speaking. My view is that you need to keep it minimum, but when it becomes necessary, then taking the compensation would be permissible. Based on what U P Sharia standard says. Here we are talking as U P. My individual view can be, okay, I'm just saying, I'm not saying my view is, but I can say, oh, we should still avoid it. We should leave it to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Okay, that is one approach that some people can take. But here we are talking about organized system which need to be run in accordance with the Sharia principles and rule established by primarily U P Sharia board. So from that perspective, I would say that compensation can be received and used. Uh Brother Shapik Ahmed has a point. Thank you, Sheikh Umar for answering my earlier question. My second question is related to Paratand. At least in general assurance, the Rita Kafal market opportunities to lead is limited and if you do not consider rate and other commercial consideration, the only regional or couple. Rita Kafal operators with ability to lead are unable to offer terms not sustainable to Takaful operator. I think there should be some limitations, say if the difference is sustainable for the Takaful operator or the difference is not significant. Brother Shapik, one of the aspect is, I would repeat that we kept that rate difference being thirty-three percent. That is one thing I know that you, you are in, you, you are in a better position to provide. Maybe you would say that five percent to ten percent is enough. I think we will request you and other market players to provide comment with regard to this rate difference. Uh practical considerations, Brother Shapik, we agree with you that yes, there are practical considerations and some of the practical considerations need to be tackled and that is the reason. That the Sharia standard talks about necessity and that's the reason that we are bringing this standard. But what would be the limit? Uh that is a question. Uh I, I'm, 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 I'm going to take your comment to the Takaful working group, uh, the Takaful committee. You may need to provide some more guidance with regard to the rate difference and any suggested rate effect that you would like to provide. That like with third, not thirty-three, what would be the situation? Last but not the least, if all of the Takaful operators stand up and say, oh, we are not going to have conventional insurance. I can tell you each of the conventional insurance, like some of them didn't pass, they will create their Rita Kafal windows. That is the, that is the first target that we want to achieve through this one, I can assure you. So again, the ideal would be that we as Takaful entities and we as industry and our Muslim, uh governments, Muslim countries, governments. They create Rita Kafal entities at the country level. That is the next level. But to be honest, at this point of time, I think, uh, we need to find solution within what is available. For that, your practical consideration effects are very much valuable. I'm not going to say that, okay, it will be accepted by the board or the committee, but this. Adds value to the understanding that we have. Thank you very much. Uh particularly comment with regard to thirty-three percent versus any other appropriate ratio and you need to provide some guidance on that part. I'm, I'm, I know that time is getting over. Unfortunately, we started a bit late, around ten minute late as well and I know that you guys must have commitments. So just let me try to conclude quickly. Uh Brother Mufti Fajrul Hassan has some general points. The necessity may not be determined by the Sharia board members at the time of request or approval or waiver. Uh in some cases, the assets are owned by the I D I's under the Islamic, okay, he has talked about the general, the approval by the institution. In some cases, the assets are owned by the I D I's under Islamic facilities and in some instances, the security assets are covered. However, in both cases, the coverage insurance is obtained by the customer as per their discretion. In Pakistan, Sharia board members' opinion practices while approving the Takaful waivers is as following. Periodic Takaful waiver approved for certain requested, for certain requested period. However, in case of receipt of and settlement of claims from conventional insurance amount and. Receipt of claims against the I D I's Islamic facilities, the case will be referred to the relevant stakeholders to the Sharia board prior to settlement against I D I facilities. But brother, uh, brother Fajrul Hassan, I think it's about conventional insurance, not conventional reinsurance. Uh if I'm not mistaken. So this is the issue about the individual entities. The, so I think your point is about the question raised by our earlier brother about the individual entities issue. So I think for that extent, I generally agree with your comment. Okay, your comment is continuing. For future, the customer should be convinced to obtain at least Takaful coverage for I D I's facilities, keeping in view the majority of the insurance companies are also having their separate Takaful window operation. As well and share the rating communication with the Takaful companies, including the Takaful window operators for consideration of Takaful waiver. In future by the Sharia authorities of the bank. Note, this approval should not be construed as a precedent, general opinion and any assistance to conventional products facilities. Brother Mufti Fajrul Hassan, considering the necessity level at the individual institution or the individual person. I think your comment and the view of the Sharia scholars that you have shared in case of Pakistan. Seems reasonable to me personally and, and obviously U P Sharia standards have been allowing this in the case of necessity as well. So how you determine necessity, obviously in the absence of any further guidance, obviously can be handled by you. Uh I have a comment from Brother Ridwan Patel, Waalaikum Salam, on behalf of Hanover Rita Kafal, we thank U P for their continuous development of the industry. Article seems, seems to suggest that retention less than thirty-three percent is not Sharia compliant. Please clarify. Brother Ridwan, thank you very much for being with us. It's highly appreciated. And I think, uh, we, we are not saying that it is, okay, let's, let's, let's put it other way around, brother. We are saying conventional reinsurance is impermissible, number one. Number two, it's permissible in case of necessity. Number three, we said that. Takaful institution should not function merely as a conduit for conventional reinsurance. What does it mean? For example, if I booked a Takaful policy and placed hundred percent of the risk. With the conventional insurance, which means that effectively I became a. Uh like sort of a front face agent or broker for the conventional insurance. That is what we have identified as a breach of the fundamental requirement because we say you can do it in the case of necessity. But we are not allowing you to become a merely an agent of the conventional business. So technically, yes, less than thirty-three percent excluding excess of law or loss policies. So for example, uh, like we are talking about the general treaty policies, yes, they will be. Uh according to thirty-three percent, if you have excess of loss or facultative or other situations. Obviously, that situation may not apply as it is. Secondly, we said that if there is a new line of business. If there is a line for which coverage is not available, like mobile phone coverage was not available. In some markets, we came to know that mobile phone coverage is being offered by Takaful companies, but it is not available in the insurance. Convent, Rita Kafal, it's available in conventional insurance only. So in for new businesses etc., we said that you keep fifteen percent. Brother Ridwan, answer is, after all this, yes, we are saying that less than thirty-three is not allowed. But is it a hard and fast rule here? This is the question that can we put a range here? Can we put another percentage with some justification here? This is the discussion point which is still open. So from your perspective, if you can provide with some data and some support that. What would be more appropriate basis here? And we are talking excluding. more appropriate basis here and we are talking excluding facultative and excessive loss situation which means that we are talking about the general transfer of press we highly appreciate your presence here highly appreciate all the cooperation that we get from Hanover from time to time and we just request you to provide some more guidance to us the more comments to us providing some more some based on if you can provide something based on data or some like guidance that how we can manage that thing better if we if we can put a better percentage which can be justified by some other reasons or rationale we kept it fifty-one to thirty-three we said normally you should keep retention because if you are saying you are doing a halal business your retention should be halal now one last thing thirty-three percent is the conventional part sorry tension part there was an argument that we had earlier that if thirty-three percent in Islamic which means retention plus Rita kafal so for example if you are covering policies in a situation on overall basis because this is the question if you apply it on the whole portfolio or you apply on each policy so for example for auto I have a treaty policy with Rita kafal Rita kafal coverage covers my like for example twenty-five percent now next level I go to conventional insurance the question that was discussed earlier at one stage which may be some explanation like you know which may be like you know improved here is that can be considered twenty-five percent which is covered with Rita kafal as a proportion within Sharia compliance so we can say that thirty-three percent should include that twenty-five percent which means that for remaining part if it is fully covered so we can we can consider that for remaining we can get keep only eight percent on a portfolio basis maybe my wording is not very clear but I'm sure you are a competitor you know more competent than me on this topic so you can well understand that what we are talking about so our issue is if I take money from a participant in the market and say I'm doing it Sharia compliant I cannot pass it on completely to conventional I need to make sure that Islamic is the significant portion that Islamic can be my own retention or that Islamic can be passed seeding with a Rita kafal so maybe that thirty-three percent or fifty-one percent or any other ratio need to be applied together on retention plus Rita kafal and excluding only the reinsurance part maybe again it's not my forte you are in a better position to provide guidance on that part this is one of the possibility that we discussed at one state Katrina Mohad Darfien what are the instances where under the name of necessity the conventional insurance offered the kafal arrangement in the form of finance financial form of financial rate should this be mentioned briefly indicating that the Sharia committee needs to be informed this kind of arrangement since finry is known to be not to be Sharia compliant in some jurisdictions to be honest we we have not covered this one we don't have experience in this one we will highly appreciate if we get some more guidance from you if we can get a policy or like you know at least this structure how it works because at this point of time it has not been covered honestly so let us see how we how we can cover it but it's honestly please you know ignore excuse our ignorance we are also learners in this field and particularly it's a very complicated field so highly appreciate your comment we'll try to do some research at our end and see how it will be there but we'll highly appreciate if you provide your comment in writing with some example of how it actually works and how we need to see it thank you very much for your very well comment brother Talal Usmani in a case of specialized risk mandatory requirement of having retention of thirty-three percent would be impracticable even largest conventional insurance the couple operators cannot absorb such high level of retention brother Talal Usmani I'll I'll request you to provide comment on that part that if retention is not enough then why why and to what extent we can consider the aspect that I was explaining earlier to brother Ridwan Patel about combined effect because our main issue is not retention our main issue is Sharia compliance so if I retain zero percent the question is if I retain zero percent but I pass on seventy-five percent to Rita kafal and twenty-five percent to reinsurance conventional should it be acceptable we need to think of it this is one of the discussion points that we had later after like you know the way we wrote it down so we need to we make need to provide some some flexibility here but to be meant to clarify brother Talal again the purpose is to ensure Sharia compliance the purpose is not retention we are putting retention so to avoid being conduit for conventional insurance so yes and now we can keep another option is we can keep some business line subject to specific approval of the RSA at the Sharia board where the requirement of thirty-three percent can be reduced up to fifteen percent that is the situation of para B in the same situation in the same para the para B is talking about fifteen percent for the areas where coverage is not available because fifteen percent is the minimum that we kept where coverage is not available or there is a new line of business which you are just establishing thank you very much brother Talal again it's an important comment for us but since you represent us you know represent a regulator I'm not sure whether you have obtained data and evaluated this thing before making this comment because your comment as a regulator is highly valuable for us but we need to understand what was the data that was used behind this comment that you made that it would be impracticable I can tell you one thing in our Sharia standard on Sharia standard on Sharia decision making there are some psychological tendencies one of the most important psychological tendency that is used most of the time by the by the management is what called exaggerated threat of loss tendency which means that yes there is a threat of loss yes there is a risk situation but that is exaggerated in a way that an objective decision-making is impacted and that is the question that okay one hundred people come to me and say it is impracticable okay just give me justifications on ground with the data and everything so your comment is very very valuable for us but at the same same time we would like to learn more from you as a regulator because you have access to the industry data how we can like you know ensure that this comment that you made is more you know validated through the ground realities and data thank you very much again for the comment comment for sure is valuable and also consider providing additional comment now or in writing with regard to the combined calculation effect that is the Sharia compliant effect not only the retention effect brother musti Fajr and Ullah son comment on paragraph section twelve it was presented that if the takaful company does not does not trading as per the bank's requirement or the customer requirement then what will happen if the takaful company is incapable to fulfill the takaful claim yes agreed from Sharia perspective in case of insurance claim the full claim amount may be having some issues for complete settlement please also advise you discussed earlier a settlement of the complete claim brother musti Fajr and we have not gone into that discussion because that's not a governance issue that's a Sharia issue we consider that when the take only taking the coverage allowed and not taking the claim not allowed means that you are wasting the participants money try to understand my point if as a scholar you say okay you can take conventional coverage but then you say but you cannot take the claim amount I'm sorry brother you are wasting participants money you shouldn't be doing that so better not to take so when we talk about this necessity element we talk about claim to be used as an income of the participant the kafal fund brother Muhammad Shwab Chima what's about necessity in case of fronting in the kafal should it be based on actual need the question is again generally I think the answer would be the same but let sister Alia take a note of it to what extent we what we would like to cover the fronting part in the standard if there is any further comment needed I think earlier in the earlier public hearing also we had some comment on that part so I think we need to do some research and see if it is covered in the current standards in some way or in some other situation we need to add what will be the situation where no Rita kafal exists for a specialized line of business only conventional exists that is paragraph B brother Hassan Idris that is paragraph B which says that at least fifteen percent you need to cover yeah you need to retain then you can go to conventional subject to obviously the necessary approvals and the governance process but you need to retain at least fifteen percent thank you very much for your comment brother that is a quick answer because now I'm just trying to conclude brother Talal Usmani again what is the responsibility of the kafal operator in 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 a case where Rita kafal is obtained and the takaful Rita couple operator then enters into retro session arrangements with a conventional insurance I think your brother Talal our responsibility ends here but if you see the scope paragraph that says that Rita kafal also need to apply this standard for retro session but my responsibility ends there if I'm a Rita kafal I'm a takaful I covered with Rita kafal my responsibility ends here unless it is written in the agreement that it will be retro session will be with conventional it means that again it is creating a conduit but if it is not written and I am having a Sharia compliant contract then my responsibility ends now since the scope of the standard talks about retro session also to be covered in this standard so then the Rita kafal operator because this standard applies on Rita kafal operator also so Rita kafal operator then has to consider the same principles for retro session I think point is clear brother Talal Usmani but maybe we might need to provide some base of conclusion and further details on that part thank you very much for your comment brother in Sayed intias Abba Susein is a comment you are right Kotak full must be encouraged instead of using conventional insurance as it reduces the need for insurance thank you very much brother intias your comments are always very valuable and your kind agreement to my comment is highly appreciated Salaam alaikum rahmatullahi wa katu brother Umar I know this is brother Muhammad Adisha I know Aofi has been trying its back to make its best to make sure that Sharia standard support operation as much as possible hence allowing conventional insurance but Aofi must continue to observe the market for abuse of the exceptional approval maybe the takaful insurance risk indication may be promoted pending when the kafal reinsurance companies are available nineteen eighty-five till date there is a long period of time for the kafal insurance companies to have been in place brother Muhammad Adisha highly appreciate your comment fully agreed I think the whole purpose of the standard is like this will take your comment to the committee and see if there is any improvement in wording needed brother Sayed intias Abba Susein again conventional insurance may be used by the kafal up to a level of break-even point is just to meet the fulfillment of commitment if you can get some profit then pass on to the Hiba pool for the better governance brother intias Abba Susein it the issue was not about profit it was about compensation of loss so we are not getting any profit what we are doing is that we have a kafal claim coming in and that the kafal claim if we get any interest income on the balances that is obviously to be paid if there is a commission from reinsurance that is not allowed but a discount is allowed but commission is not allowed so these are clear as per Sharia standard these are part of this standard as well but when it comes to the claim amount normally the claim amount does not include any profit because claim amount is is actually against the claim that I have already received and I need to pay my part of the retention as well so from that perspective generally there won't be any income coming in that's my understanding except for the exchange differences yes there is a possibility of exchange differences sister Alia just make a note of it exchange differences or any other difference in the amount of claim settlement that results in a gain or loss what to do for it that is one question that we should put the question to the takaful committee and see if they want to consider it in the standard thank you very much brother intias Abba Susein and thank you everybody my real apologies we have run nearly twenty minutes about time we started ten minutes late but just answering your questions took a little bit more so my apologies for the delay and now let's try to conclude it it's back to sister Alia for conclusion thank you everybody
Thank you brother Amar Mustafa Ansari the secretary general of Aofi I would like also to thank our partner Al Medina Takafan special thanks also go to all attendees for your participation in this important public hearing if you still have any comments or question or suggestion please send it to governors at aov.com please check out our social media accounts and Aofi website in order to view the latest update with regards the upcoming public hearings and events thank you so much everyone Salaam alaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh